Correct, that's the only commercial property there. Everything else is already planned, right? And I think it should stay there. You know, because he made a bad business decision, everybody down here is gonna have to suffer. I mean, it's just telling them that the way it is. Uh, he shouldn't have looked into all of these kind of things before he invested in it. I think that totally won't be the best you could ever have. But then again, he's got, he's got a trail set up down there now for show and tell. He's already on the internet that you can bring it up and see that the Marines pulled a hole. He must have a lot of faith to go to, to bought off somebody to get into it. You gotta be so favored just for everything going to change so fast over three weeks, for three months. Now, the commission was then against it. They could even get somebody to put it up for a movement. And now here we got a hundred eighty degrees and he's down here, I know he's not pouring. And I think that you guys are rushing into this thing and it's, uh, take a long hard look.
Well, thank you for your input. We do appreciate you coming here to voice your opinion.
Oh, good, I appreciate it, but I'm not sure who's the commissioner, the chairman here sometimes when listening to this. But, uh, I think, oh, three minutes. And if they're available, will offer anybody else? Okay. Andrea.
Well, unfortunately, I think you have to.
Well, uh, it seems that this master plan had been voted in.
Okay. Three minutes.
So, we're, so close to public comment?
Well, I don't, I think there's other.
Are you gonna read the comments in? That's what you said you were gonna do.
We did have some extra comments, was, is that what you're referring to, ask some letters?
Aren't those gonna be read in?
Um, John has them to read into the record.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Once they're read in, it could agree with.
Cause I would like to make my comments after those are put on there.
Which, which one am I reading in?
It's up to you if you wanna read them now or you wanna, or read them. It's, it's up to him. He can go three minutes and then truncate like we've done in the past, or he can extend and read the whole thing.
Which one?
I think one.
Hold on, did you say you're only gonna read three minutes of those?
The one, Nico?
Oh, boy.
I think.
Get that out of the phone.
Andrea.
Okay, let's, close public comment for the moment, um.
No, this is public comment, sorry.
Okay, this, which one do you want read in? Wait, which one, which one would you like read in?
He wants both read in.
You gotta read everything. Your notice says those will be read into the record. So, don't do it and you're violating no law.
That's what I'm asking.
No, they both have, any, any written comments that were submitted before five o'clock last night?
He thought, he thought it was just gonna be yours and then you comment, but is it your son's letter that's also?
I don't know, whatever does.
We'll get, we'll get both of them read.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'll start off with this one. RA proposed zone change from RA five C two, front half divided parent parcel APN zero one zero dash four four zero dash eleven. Dear Commission Members, I'm writing as a private citizen to oppose this requested zone change. My interest is because I grew up on a five acre parcel some three hundred fifty feet away and I currently, I currently own the water rights on the agricultural land. When you considered, uh, this request in February, March of this year, there were concerns about spot zoning, conflict with the master plan and the granting of a C two classification for the entire twelve acre parcel. The application was not approved. Subsequently, the county commission considered an application and had the same concerns. The application is not approved. Since then, there is a new parcel map which creates two five acre parcels and a seven acre parcel for which the zone change is requested, or it is not clear how the prior parcel listed twelve acres, but the new survey shows seventeen acres. Despite the action of the board and the county commission, the applicant has moved forward with the establishment of this business in violation of the zoning ordinance. Exhibit one is a photo shot of a website showing the address and exhibit two is the photo of the manufactured home currently on the site. As your February meeting, Mr. Vedrine admitted that he did not need the entire parcel rezoned, only about two acres. Exhibit three is a copy of the minutes with the highlighted portions on page five dash two eight in spite of. Uh, the request is to now rezone the seven acre parcel. The record in this case does not support and actually contradicts the requested change. There's no dispute that Mr. Vedrine has a good idea for business and appears likely to be successful. However, that fact alone does not support the zone change. I submit that this is a classic case of spot zoning, which is not allowed. As noted, my memo to you dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the test of spot zoning is, quote, whether the change was made with the purpose of furthering comprehensive zoning scheme or whether it was designed to merely relieve the land of a restriction. Clearly, this change is not part of the plan to further a comprehensive zoning scheme. This request simply to relieve the land of what Mr. Vedrine bought of a longstanding restriction. Further section seventeen dash, uh, dot twenty dot zero two zero D of the county court mandates that to approve this change, the county must find the public necessity, convenience and general welfare. Our good zoning practice requires this change. I submit this change does not meet that standard. The fact that the applicant, uh, bought this land at a cheap price because of the RA five zoning and then set up his business is not a reason to approve this change. Statements made at your prior meetings that there is not commercial property available for sale are simply not true. To be clear, this is not about Mr. Vedrine or investment. This is not about the need for affordable housing, is about whether the facts and the law support the change. Thank you for your consideration. Steve DeBrescu. Now. Is, uh, did you wanna read, uh?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read the other letter. Um, hello, my name is Nico DeBrescu. Am I pronouncing that right? Okay. Um, I am a neighbor at eight eighty North Fifty-Ninth East. I just want to voice my concern again on the property rezoned by Mr. Vedrine. The circumstances have not changed since the last reclassification attempt. This is still spot zoning and would still be making a property that has been set up to be reclassified prior to the rezone of commercial property. Thus, increasing its value overnight, lowering mine and neighbors and opening a door for who knows what's to come into our little farming area out in the J and M subdivision in the future. There are still multiple commercial properties available for his business that are zoned properly. The neighbor of Mr. Uh, Mr. Vedrine to the west, Eighteenth Towing, is still a literal junkyard, bringing all types of unwanted people, noise and loud trucks driving way too fast all hours of the night. This stands as a foreshadow of what will come should the property be rezoned. Also, where would this commission stop if we give him just this little piece? This is the whole reason that properties are designated into different zone classifications, to protect the way of life and purpose for, of properties. Much like the national parks that are designated to protect what's there. After the county commission meeting, we spoke with Mr. Vedrine and made it clear we would not be in favor of a C two rezone at any time. He told me, quote, "I will make money either way. I will split, split the lot and put a few homes out there and sell them," end quote. That sounded like a pretty good plan that we could all agree on. Apparently, this was a lie as he has been operating his business from this property since twenty twenty-one, even though the zoning is not correct. His webpage states the address of his business as well as his Facebook page. Now, there is a mobile home that is beginning, or that is sitting in the lot. So, as far as I'm concerned, he has been operating his business since the beginning out of the property that, and that worries me, that it is already done, a done deal. And these meetings are just protocol and a waste of time at this point. I don't wanna cause waves typically and I mind my own. However, this comes down to what I think we are headed down a slippery path that will lead to problems in the future. Thanks for your time. A concerned neighbor. Okay. All right, um.
I'm picking it up.
Did you, go ahead.
First, public comment.
Public hearing. Right, public hearing?
Yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, and I would like to note too that Mr. Vedrine's been up about five times during the other part. So, if the buzzer goes, I've got this as tight as I can get it, but I'm gonna ask your courtesy, please.
Yeah, uh, the chairman will, if, if, if he wishes to extend, I can.
I'm really close to it. So, first of all, I think the, uh, the comments and the minutes from the meetings in February and March need to be made part of this record. I think they should be considered by the board, cause there was a lot of betting this whole thing. So, that would be part of the record that the, the county commission and whoever will review down the road. And at that point, there was no consensus to grant for the twelve acres. Now, what's changed is we have a seven acre request. That's the difference. That's really the difference. Except for one other thing, Mr. Vedrine went ahead and continued with his business. He's been doing his business and he even admitted it. It's a violation of law, it's a violation of zoning ordinance, and it's crime. It's a misdemeanor under our state, under county code. So, be careful what you do because you're encouraging things here. This is not about his business. This is about where it should go. And in order to find that, you have to find that it's required to be, get this change in order for all these things to happen. So, here's the problem. You go with the C two, and I don't know that you can just go the frontage strip. That's what it says on all the documents, but good, I'm just throwing that out there. You're gonna, you have a parcel that has this hook all the way back here. And if you're only talking about the frontage, it's very confusing. If you go C two, here's what you're allowing. Lots of it. Auto machine repair shop, bar, bus terminal, casino, hotel, liquor store, tire shop. That's in your ordinance. That becomes anything he can do at any point, no matter what. The IML building, the one that is clearly a C two right here, which you all know about. For years, that was clean. It was just like FedEx building. Then it was used for storage, uh, Conex box sales. And then when a new owner came in, that's the junkyard out there. Now, you might have seven acres, a junkyard there eventually. This is what happens to the C two on the highway. And I will say this too, drive from McGill, pretend you've never been to Ely. Drive from McGill and look at the C two along the frontage road. You leave McGill, you got a dilapidated trailer park on the one side. You got abandoned car wash on the other. When you get into residential, most of it's pretty nice along the frontage road. So, this fallacy that frontage should be commercial, look at what's happened to our community. Then you get to the EMS building, leave there, look at WSE. There's a hundred and fifty junk cars right on this highway. If I'm a tourist now, I'm somebody coming to Ely and I see that, I'm going, wow. Then what happens? You get this vacant land. Next to it, you get this. I want these part of the record as well. What happens when you go past that? On the right-hand side, on the, on the west side, you got old cars, you got, it's been a problem already. Some kind of Conex box building, you've got junk everywhere there. Turn back on the west side. Dilapidated old gas station, abandoned, commercial again. Keep going down the road. You got the former Motor View Drive-In Theater that all us old timers remember. Total junkyard, C two. Then you have a clean junkyard. Then you have a completely abandoned ramshackle trailer park with dilapidated stuff everywhere. And then a half dilapidated one. That's your commercial on the frontage.
Okay, you can continue.
And that's what you see when you drive into Ely until you get to town. That's what I'm talking about. And there's no way to stop those pictures from going the full seven acres. Mr. Vedrine's got a good business, but the question is whether he has a good business. It's where it should go. And he bet, he bet on come here. He bought residential, he bought residential at a cheap price. I bet, if you knew there were seventeen acres and you knew it could have been commercial, it would have been a different story. Absolutely. You wanna look up the valley, the valley, uh, uh, right down the road, Valley Irrigation next to the Motor View? You know what that sold for? Three years ago, it sold for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's a five acre parcel, cause it's commercial. It just sold a year ago or two for three hundred thousand. Commercial property is expensive and it's there for a reason. And so, if you're gonna allow this, what you're allowing is anybody to go buy some residential land wherever they want and put on a business that we need. I'll tell you some businesses. I'll buy parcel number two, parcel number three, and I'll come back and I'll say, look, I wanna put, what can we use here? Another grocery store. I want a rental car agency. I want an animal shelter. I want a hearing aid center. Every one of those things is important to this community. And how are you gonna say no? How are you gonna say no? Because we've got commercial seven acres of it right there. That's all I gotta say. This is not about his business and what the community needs. It's about what's the right thing to do and, and somebody should put their business where it should go.
Thank you. I don't think you addressed yourself. Can I get your names?
Yes, Steve DeBrescu.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comment?
So, buzz rusher. Tim came into my office sometime, maybe a couple days after the last hearing when he was in and was denied on his zone change. Uh, since then, I was doing some research and it, since when I pulled up this master plan, which shows his entire property slated for commercial zoning. So, I was pretty confused on why it wasn't turned down the first time when the master plan already had his entire property slated as commercial. And that was the only question I, I did bring that up with Tim when he was in the office. And I don't know that you had the master plan at the time on the first one, but that was the only question I had from the prior meeting, why that wasn't addressed.
Well, um.
Any other public comment? I'm gonna close public comment and open up for discussion. And we're opening up for a discussion of the reclassification of zoning property from RA five Ranch Agricultural to C two General Commercial. Cause they have the east of Ninety Third Street, north of Ely, Nevada, front halves divided parent parcel APN zero one zero dash four four zero dash zero eleven. Section one Township sixteen north range sixty-three east of the J and M subdivision. One point I wanna make here, uh, in, in this letter that we read in public is this, clearly, this change is not a part of plan to further a comprehensive zoning scheme. Even though this is the comprehensive zoning scheme right here, which is the master plan from, from two thousand, that specifically slates the whole shot out to McGill on either side as a commercial strip. So, uh, this is clearly part of, um, an initial zoning scheme that was, uh, that was put in place twenty-two years ago. Uh, all we're doing is following through this and then, and, uh, your comment in regards to this particular piece of property is that that entire section, uh, which is, uh, parcel one, two, and three were included in this as commercial. In this case, we're only going for, um, parcel one as being commercial and the rest is still remains as a residential agriculture. So, there's like a two-hundred-foot buffer off of Highway ninety-three that is commercial and then the rest of it still remains exactly the way it is. Am I correct in that?
Did anybody look at the latest master plan? Rodney, you would know about it. There's been a master plan since two thousand that's changed a lot of stuff. Cause we worked on it with the Water Committee.
I, I know.
White Lake County site.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's about the new master plan.
It's the adopted, current adopted plan.
Okay.
So, I'd just like to say that, um, as I did before, um, generally on a main highway, it is designated for future commercial growth. And so, um, I think the main issue that this was turned down before was there was a lot of concern about, you know, being too close to, um, residential area. Although, if you look on each side, you can see, um, there are operations, they are operating as commercial. So, um, I think this is a good compromise and just to answer your question, how far could it go? Well, if Vedrine was so fortunate to do so well and expand, it very well could, you know, he could come later and maybe wanna expand to designated commercial area. Right now, all he's asking for is for the, the frontage part to start his business. And it is designated for commercial growth. I, I'm, I'm absolutely in favor for this and, for this, um, initiative here. I understand that there are opposing views. And not, not all of us will agree on everything. But I think we beat a dead horse pretty well enough, so I'm just gonna say.
Well, not yet, not yet. I'm, I'm gonna ride this horse a little more. Okay, Steve, I'd like to dress, and, and I don't know, maybe my line here. These junk outfits, I've been on RPC years ago too where, uh, we set some up and like you say, the, the Bill Bass started that one out there, Napper or whatever. And I remember there's a stipulation in there, there were gonna be no tires, no junk vehicles. And I then, I don't know, I was off for a while too. We didn't have RPC. I know what happened, but if there was going to be anything along there, and same with some of these others that are turning into junkyards, we're supposed to put a fence, you know, six to eight-foot fence somewhere. I mean, I don't know if that's better or not, but I'm seeing a lot of these. You come into Altman, you see junk. You see junk all over. I've got, out where I live, people have home occupations and turn it into junk mechanic shops because there's no policing. I don't know where you go in, who's policing this, and who's supposed to do it, but you come in here and you see a junk town. And that's your, your first impression. And I wouldn't want that, uh, and I'm not saying he's gonna do that, but I wouldn't want to take a chance and say, there's gonna be a junkyard right next to my property too. It devalues me. I don't know where the answer is there. It's in policing or something, because I know there were stipulations in there, cause we wrote those down. Either a high fence to board, whatever you call it, a security fence or visual, whatever. But it's a junkyard out there and it's ugly. And there's a lot of ugliness coming into the town from the north. I don't wanna see any more of it, so I don't know how you stop that. If you wanna have a commercial, I don't see the spot zoning. So, we went through this, these master plans a lot. You got industrial, you got the C two, and then you have a buddy, uh, residential. So, you have all three of them there. As long as it's not thrown in the middle somewhere, it's still with the strip. I like the strip idea with the buffer of the RA five. I like that, but once C two's in there, I agree. I don't know how the hell you, I don't know who's supposed to police that. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be ignorant here. I don't know who's not policing.
Actually, Jesse, I think that, that would be more under the view of the city council that's supposed to, uh, oversee that sort of thing.
Well, I mean, I don't know who, it's county, cause, cause I'm seeing, okay.
What do you think?
It would be under the nuisance mitigation laws or the, the law that would pass that requires.
Because it's really getting, you have prime commercial property, people are sitting on it for investment or rent. It's a junkyard. Or they're just sitting there wasting prime, prime commercial property. And I mean, I don't know what to do with it. I mean, and I know George brings other things up too, and it seems like it comes back each meeting. I'm going, who takes care of this stuff? Cause it's not, I, I can't do it. Who's policing this? Cause it's not being done. I don't wanna hear the same stuff over and over again for the next twenty years.
Right, we're getting off, we're getting off track. That's, that's.
Okay, but this still comes into policing. This still.
That, that's usually done by, a complaint is filed with the building department or with our office.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Investigating, investigated by the building department and then, um, follow-up investigation or maybe the requirements are met by the landowner or the owner of the property.
Okay, so all these junkyards that, that aren't in complaint, that we made these, let them with special use. Somebody needs to write a letter saying, we need to clean these up.
And we have started on a lot of these properties, sending out notifications and working with the D and E's office to.
But I'd like to see them cleaned up. I would, I would.
I would, working on it.
Okay, I, I just want to know who's doing it.
We've sent out some notices already.
Can I speak to it, yes?
I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to know who's doing it.
Not public, uh, yet.
Yeah, we're talking just about zoning of this property.
Okay, I, sorry, I knew I'd get off track, but I'm just going.
It's okay, Jesse.
It keeps going on and on and on, and I'm tired of hearing.
Good thoughts.
I mean, I, I think he clearly stated what his intention is, is on the frontage to do three model homes. We can't, you know, stop future business because of that, but I absolutely agree with you that we have too many of those. And I, I, it must be, um, you know, an enforcement problem or something, because it is a problem. Thanks for bringing that up.
Something like that can be addressed with a conditional special use permit that we're gonna be voting on?
Well, it doesn't do any good if nobody polices it. I mean, I mean, that, that's where everybody's getting to. We're gonna end up with more junkyards. And I'm not saying it is, but how do you prevent that? And have an enforcement tool to stop it. That, that's all I care, that's all I'm caring. I mean, by the way, I'll correct.
Okay.
No, no, you're not. And I do understand, uh, you know, that your points made in, in the letters. I mean, it is a big problem, but, um, and I'm glad we're discussing it, um, but, you know, as far as this goes, um, I think Vedrine has made it clear what his intentions are on that frontage. And hopefully, we see an improvement as someone running a nice commercial business, nice frontage, and will change that course, you know, um.
Can I speak or do I have to wait till everything's cleared or?
I don't know.
When do I get to speak?
Only if you need clarification on an issue that's been brought up, you haven't before.
Yeah.
It's an integral part to it, please.
Did, did you need to clarify that?
No, do you need clarification?
Do I, do I?
Only if, only if the board needs clarification.
I would like to hear him speak if you have a point on this topic.
I do. So, I will give you an example. If you go down that road today, the county doesn't bush hog that size of that road. I, do, do, who bush hog Bill Budd?
He does a better job than the county, give him credit.
So, when the snow doesn't give it clearance and you can't, gets deep on your road, who clears the snow party, Bill Budd?
What?
What?
But he was starting his backhoe at the time to do his own, but I appreciate it.
Wait, I'm, all I'm getting at is, I, I get it. There's a lot of six-foot weeds all over town. I get it. I'm not that kind of person. And if you don't believe me, drive by my house, seventeen sixty North Street. Go see my house. Go drive by my property. You know, and if there's an eyesore out there, please say something. Hey, Tim, fix this, even for you guys. Hey, Tim, clean that up. Come to me. I'm not a lazy person. I promise you that. Uh, I am bringing in brand new homes. I don't want a junkyard. It, I, I don't want, that's not my intentions. I'm, I'm here to bring something good to our community. And, and I get it, there's, there's a lot of garbage. There is. But, I mean, my, my property, just speaking on my behalf, I mean, I shouldn't be judged because this guy does this or that guy does that or, I'm not those people. That, that's all I'm saying. And I don't know, and like Bill Budd said, we just say, well, the whole community doesn't like it. Well, the whole community's not here. He can only speak for himself. He can only speak for themselves. We're the only ones here talking about this.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Back to panel discussion. Anything else, Jesse, or?
No, I just, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to see the business. I don't think it's a spot zoning as, as far as the definition we went through with all the, the land use plans, and I'm not an expert. I'm just going my opinion. But it, it coming in there and that little strip there, two-hundred-something and then coming off that other road, there's commercial air, another junkyard. And we're gonna have to click it, police it. The other will stay RA five. There is a buffer. I.
It's a continuation of the, the initial master plan?
Yeah.
For?
Yeah.
To make it live.
And, and he's gonna leave, or have to leave these other two as RA five, so I think he's made a good, uh, conditional in good faith of, you know, those are RA five. And if it came back to wanting them commercial, horror chains, I mean, that would be really tough now, cause the, the frontage is already there. That's not frontage anymore.
Exactly.
Those two, I would say, who knows, who's on this board, someone.
Yeah, that would, that would then fall outside the, the master plan.
Yeah, then, I mean, it would be a continuation of C two or still RA five, but it's not highway frontage. So, it would have to be a hell of an enterprise to.
Yeah, that would be a problem at that point.
Yeah. I, that's my thought.
I, you know, I agree with that. Okay, discussion over. Do I hear a motion?
I will gladly move to approve this.
Okay, Leah moves to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second this, cause I don't see that as a spot zoning and he's, he's left that as RA five. I, I, I'm looking at that and there is, okay, I'll make the second. There is an appeal even though the county commission, you know, thinking of that, but I'll make the second.
This is a, this is a continuation, the initial master plan.
Yeah.
And his compliance with that plan is not outside that plan.
Yeah. So, I'll second that.
Okay, then, in that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Nay.
Okay. Jesse, Clay, and myself, aye, a nay, but it still passes. We go on to public hearing, consideration for application of conditional special use permit. Applicant to the Vedrine wishes to have the mobile home sales business on the property. Addressed eight hundred east Ninety-third Street, north Ely, Nevada. Front half of the highway frontage is divided parent parcel APN zero one zero dash four four zero dash one one, section one township sixteen north range sixty-three east of the J and M subdivision. So, we'll open that up for public hearing for mobile home sales.
Want me to get up or what?